I only know that my apartment.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, April 15th Tax Day meeting for the Village of Lansing's Board of Trustees. Tonight, we're having a special meeting and we're having a joint meeting with our planning board. We have several people online. I will call the Board of Trustees meeting to order. And the first thing I will do is a parole call. Susan Ainsley.
Present.
Wolfgang Bulmer.
Here.
Carolyn Greenwald.
Here.
Drew Riedel.
Present online.
Thank you, Drew. And myself, Ronnie Hardaway. The next thing we will need to do is call the Planning Board meeting to order.
So I will call the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for the joint meeting to order at 7:30, 2:00 p.m. And appoint Yemela as a voting member tonight. Other than that, Jim is not here this evening.
Okay. Thank you. So the first order of business in tonight's meeting is a public comment period. This is a portion of our meeting where anyone who would like to speak on a topic that is not already on our agenda can speak to us. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Seeing none. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Seeing and hearing none, I will move that we close the public comment period. I need a second.
Second.
Wolfgang, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comment period is now closed. Our next topic is the award of material bid for a 2024 utility and sidewalk improvements. I sent this to everyone this afternoon. It was kind of late coming in, the one from T.G. Miller, where they recommended an award to a bidder that was signed by Donald Harner, Donald or Dondi Harner. And John Courtney has agreed with Dondi's assessment that the successful bidder who should be awarded this contract is Core and Main of Binghamton, New York. And their base bid amount was $257,432.11. There will probably be an additional contingency fund on top of that to cover any sort of expected expenses that would occur during the development of the project. So John and Jody will get together and determine how much that would be, somewhere between 5% and 10% as a contingency fund. So I would like to move the resolution to award the material bid for the 2024 utility and sidewalk improvements to Core and Main of Binghamton, New York, in the amount of I would need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this award?
I can't speak intelligently to anything there because I didn't have a chance to look at the details.
All of the details. Questions can be asked. One thing I did ask John was that was this bid under our budgeted amount? And he said, yes, the budgeted amount for materials for this project was about $341,000. So we were well under that, so we should be in pretty good shape, even with adding a contingency fund. So if there are questions in the future, Wolfgang, you're welcome to ask those as we go along.
So I can't talk intelligently about it, so I don't have a vote right now.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Means I would abstain.
Okay. Thank you, Wolfgang. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of awarding this bid to Core and Main of Binghamton, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Drew, I believe you can vote.
Yes. Aye.
Okay. We have four votes for aye. Wolfgang, it stings. Thank you all. All right. We are at 7:36, so we will move into a public hearing for the budget. I will move that we open the public hearing for budget at 7:36 p.m.
I'll sign.
Thank you, Carolyn. I'm having to take notes also, so give me a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing for the 2024 Village of Lan- 2024, 2025 Village of Lansing budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Drew votes aye also. Is there any public comment on the 2024, 2025 Village of Lansing budget? This is your opportunity to talk or ask questions about the budget. I see no one in the room. Hearing none and seeing none, I will move that we close the public hearing for the I need a second to close. Wolfgang, seconds. Any other discussion about the budget?
The document which went out, where the percentages are in general fund, water fund, sewer fund. I think these percentages are pre our discussion.
The document you're talking about is this one?
No, the email which went out, the attachment.
Oh, okay. All right.
And so there is a 56 something percent water fund and 67 something percent sewer fund, and I think that was before we fixed the budget. The percentages right now are much lower than what's mentioned in the document.
Are you talking about the increase in the water rate?
No, I'm talking about the general numbers. So if you look into, I don't have the document.
So here.
What page is that?
At the end somewhere.
Okay.
So just go down here. There's the general fund increased by 6.58%, and it's much less than 6.58% right now because the general fund went up from three, no, from last year's $3,192,239, went up to $3,215,038. That's actually less than 1%. Then the water fund went up from 1,753,773 to 2,317,958. That's in the range of 35% or something like that. And here it says 56.83. So I think these are old numbers, pre our discussion.
Okay. What's the date on that form, Wolfgang? I could pull it up, but I got it.
There was the most recent email which went out to us.
Right. But the top of this.
It says undisclosed recipients, so I assume it went out to a broader audience.
No, no, yeah, yeah. I'll try to pull it up. Hang on. That one probably went out to the.
It was sent out Sunday night.
Yeah, yeah. It's a filler Gmail list, I'm almost certain.
Yep. And that went out Sunday night, and I think, you know, if somebody sees 56 and whatever percent, then it's definitely not 56%.
Yeah, yeah. It's dated.
They really.
It's dated April 7th, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not so sure whether they really sit down and look at the numbers and say, hey, these percentages are simply off, because the general fund actually is about in the range of less than 1%.
I need one person. Not a lot of people will look at it, but there will be someone.
Well, I looked at it because I'm used to look at percentages, so anyways.
We can address those, see if they are incorrect. Send out an email that corrects.
Based on numbers, they're not correct, but.
If we're not, if we're missing something that Jody had included that we didn't know about.
If I remember right, these were the original numbers for the first go around of the.
Before we finished our.
Before we finished all our discussions and whatever, and took things out of the budget and things like that. So I think, you know, we should take a little bit of credit in increasing the general fund only by 1%. Honestly.
Yeah. We should let people know that then. Thank you. Thank you for catching it. I did not catch it. So we needed a second for closing the public hearing.
Second.
Susan, seconds. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's unanimous, Drew voted aye also. Jody gave me some notes here. This is just for the recording. The proposed budget for the general fund is $3,215,938, which is a 6.58% increase from last year. That might not be right.
Definitely not.
The tax rate will remain the same at $150 per $1,000 of assessed value. That has been the same for several years now. We are appropriating a fund balance of $816,124 this year. The water fund budget is $2,317,950. And we are increasing our water rent surcharge from 60% to 70%, starting with the July water billing within the Village of Lansing. This increase is meant to rebuild our reserve fund for water, for future water maintenance, water line maintenance. We suspect that there are some, we know that there are some areas within the village that their water system is reaching the end of its life, and we're probably going to have to do some planning and some maintenance on those water lines. So we want to start building a reserve that will help us cover those expenses down the road when they are needed. Sewer budget this year is $1,991,340. That is down 67.86%. Last year, it was very high because of our sewer expansion project that we undertook to build sewer line between the town of Lansing through the Village of Lansing and to connect into Village of Cuyahoga Heights wastewater treatment plant. And there is also an appropriated sewer fund balance of $632,500 from this year. So that's a kind of a quick summary of the general categories. So having gone through the preliminary budget discussion and having gone through our public hearing, I would like to move the resolution, our resolution to adopt our 2024, 25 proposed budget as the official 2024, 25 Village of Lansing budget. I would need someone to second that. Seconded by Susan Ainsley. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about making this our final budget, our formal budget? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor of passing the resolution to adopt our 24, 25 proposed budget as the official 24, 25 Village of Lansing budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. That's done. Okay. So the next order of business is to begin our discussion with the planning board members. And the first topic is to discuss the changes to the tree law.
Yeah, so we can, I can provide a quick update, and if other people want to chime in, by all means. So the, you know, the tree law was developed a couple of years ago. It's been in place. It's been triggered twice through special permit at the planning board now, once on a residential property and once on a commercial property. And it's gone through both times. Even before that, though, there were a couple of things that we wanted to get cleaned up in the current iteration of the tree law, and then also some things that just kind of came to mind as we actually worked through the process with, you know, actual people out in the real world and not a, you know, theoretical code. So at our last meeting, the agenda was very light, so we actually sat down and went through some notes that Yemela and Lisa and I had kind of gathered up, as well as Michael and Natalie, and started to kind of discuss those. So at some point, I would imagine, I think we made it maybe about a third or halfway through there, just taking some notes on some things. Natalie was going to work on a few things and try to figure out a way to fit them in there, but so I would suspect over the, you know, next month or two, hopefully you'll see some, you know, proposed changes from us for you all to consider.
Okay.
And when we do bring them, which we didn't do with the solar law, which we should've, I think if you're up for it, maybe when we bring it up at the, or when we pass it along to the trustees for you all to review, myself or maybe somebody else too, we'll come and just kind of discuss the thought process behind it and what the changes are, instead of just saying, here you go.
Do you have questions right now? Like, are there questions where you're thinking, should we do four units or five units in this circumstance?
No, no, I mean, there's, you know, some of the high level things are, that really came out at the last meeting, and I think Northeast Pediatrics triggered that, was, is the number of units right for commercial and residential? Should it be different? If it is different, how do we factor in things? You know, for example, right, on my house, I don't have, I have a lot more place and space on my property to plant trees because I don't have a large square footage, you know, commercial building. I don't have all the necessary parking that I have to have because of that building. I have a driveway. I've got plenty more space to plant trees.
Okay.
Northeast Peds didn't. So that was kind of the big topic there. So we don't have, I don't think we have any questions, but that was a big topic.
So you want less units on commercial property?
Not necessarily. We were just thinking that that might be a path to go down. There was always this kind of lingering piece from when we passed the tree law about, you know, is this right for residential and commercial, or should there be a carve-out for one or the other? So I suspect and I think that the general board's direction was to have less, based off of a calculation, though, you know, taking square footage and, you know.
To require less units, you mean?
Right, for commercial, right. And maybe also for residential, we don't know, but that was the description we had. That was a discussion we had.
Sorry. Is it worded, how the sidewalk law is worded, insofar as it says, like, these are the considerations and everything can be waived ultimately by the planning board?
So after, and I know Drew's got some comments in here that were put into the redline version of the solar, we started to discuss putting those in too. So, you know, for example, when we talked about Northeast Peds, they have a ton of solar panels up on top of their roof, so maybe that is a contributing factor. So we wanted to build some examples in to the proposed changes to the tree law, just like Drew had suggested in the solar law. So maybe it is sidewalks, maybe it is.
And then will there be also waiver? Like, you know, the planning board ultimately can waive whatever?
So that's partially in there now. The planning board has the ability to lower, if they can't meet the minimum tree density, we have the ability to lower the, lower what would have to be contributed to the bank. But we don't have, we can't just say, no, you don't have to do it. Don't worry, we waive everything.
So we have these two examples, and the residential one came up, and it turns out they've got plenty of trees, but because it was triggered, he was totally amenable to having street trees put on once the sewer along Cuyahoga Heights is done. We said terrific, because we, the more trees, the better. Then we give Northeast Pediatrics, which is a whole different ballgame. And again, these different things came up. I think we were aware of some of these prior to these two coming before us, but what seemed really, oh, really simple, we just make a minor change. You know, we're just taking a really hard look at everything, going through it again. And whether it's tree units, I mean, I'm looking at some other examples. Yemela is a, we're fortunate to have her as a planner onboard, and so we're having someone come to talk to us about trees and whatnot. And it was interesting because, you know, if we hadn't noticed that they had solar panels in Northeast Peds, we might have been a little more stringent. One of the things that we did say is, you know, had we gone with our tree things, it would have been pretty pricey for them to contribute to the bank. And we did decide that it would be important for them to make a commitment to the bank, because I feel either we are committed to this concept of trees or not, that we would have some sort of contribution to the tree bank, which they, we then voted. So we did lower the amount that was perhaps suggested, because.
Lisa, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were done. Go ahead.
No, that's it. That's it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Just, sorry to jump in, it's kind of hard to, online, but just, if it's helpful, the EPA.gov has a website where it translates carbon emissions into how many, the tree planting equivalent. And, you know, you guys can, it's pretty relatively easy to work through, but, you know, so you could take a number that say, you know, one kilowatt nameplate capacity or emissions avoided, you know, for geothermal or whatever, could equal this many trees planted. But obviously, I think because trees, because you want to leave some margin for the calculation, and trees have lots of other benefits in terms of aesthetics and biodiversity and habitat, you might not, you might choose to, you know, do half that or a quarter of that number, but at least that gives you some hard number for how many emission, at least in greenhouse gases or carbon emissions, what the metric is, or get a rough estimate.
Correct. And Lisa touched on it too. One of the other things that we decided is, right, there's not a ton of things, but we, you know, thought it would probably be better for us to pass along a comprehensive thing to you, instead of just saying, well, next week, you'll get this one changed from us, and then two weeks, you'll get this next one. So we are really going through the whole thing. Yeah, so, but like I said, we made it through a decent chunk of it, so it'll, it'll all come in a package and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Mike, can you help me? The one you sent around, the email, is the tree count and the replacement. So for a tree, I don't know, 10 inches, you have to plant two or three new trees and whatever?
The appendix that describes the units. Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Talking about this?
Yeah, I'm talking about that. So, you know, if you, there are at least up there, and I'm pretty sure down there as well, if you have mature trees, and you have to cut them down, and then you have to plant two or three more trees, there is no place on the lot unless you want to basically plant a forest around your house. So how are we dealing with these kinds of things? And some of them are getting to their end of their life, honestly. So you need to cut them either down or you risk your house. So how are we dealing with these kinds of things?
Well, that's, I think, so, you know, trees that are not healthy are covered kind of in it as it is, you know.
Is it?
Yeah, it is. Or if it threatens your neighbor or whatever. Now, that is in there kind of already. It's just, we don't want people just saying, oh, I just really, well, you know, this started because of a kind of clear cut that happened on dark drive. That's what honestly prompted. This is the dark drive law, in a funny way. And of course, it's more complicated than you realize. That's it. And so, you know, we're.
You know, I just read an article where insurance companies are flying out drones.
Right.
And they decline insurance because your tree is hanging over your roof and things like that, so there is no other way than cutting down this tree to get your insurance. So how are we dealing with these kinds of things? And it's more common right now.
Well, one of the things to consider is that the tree law only comes into effect if you apply for a special permit.
Okay.
If you're doing regular maintenance, tree maintenance, you don't get, you don't trigger the law.
Well, that's probably not maintenance, cutting down a tree just to get insurance. I would not consider that as maintenance.
Well, it doesn't trigger a special permit, so it doesn't make that consideration. It's really for things that come to us for special permit, trigger that rule. So we're looking at the tree equivalency numbers, the units. There is a calculation that this is based on for how many trees can fit on an acre of property. And so that calculation is already kind of baked into this, and we're fine tuning the numbers. And the other thing that we're trying to do is we're trying to close a little bit of a loophole, because right now, a person can plant shrubs instead of trees and have a certain number of points added to that. So theoretically, you could, you know, put in 40 little boxwoods that are two gallon size, that will never have the kind of ecosystem services that a tree has, and you will have fulfilled the law. So we're looking to see how we can make sure that we balance, because really what we're looking for is diversity. Have some shrubs, have some trees, have some trees be evergreen and some be deciduous, because that's how we make, that's how we make a landscape that's functional, that helps sequester water, that helps sequester carbon, and that deals with our runoff. So we're trying to make it so that there's some flexibility in there, what you're putting in, but to make sure that somebody who's a bad actor doesn't just try to find a loophole through there.
Right. To, so to replace mature trees with a lot of shrubs.
Right.
You don't want that. Yeah, that makes sense.
And part of it too, when the law was originally written, and the question you said about, right, well, you know, I've got this mature tree and I want to, you know, say you want to build an addition or something, and it just, so part of it, I remember having this discussion with Simon, and I don't know if it was the joint meeting or not, you know, part of it is to, you know, kind of discourage that and try to find ways to save those mature trees. You know, sometimes, right, sometimes you can't, you know, depending on, you know, what happens on your property, whether it's something you can control or not. But I do remember that question coming up while Simon was working on, working on that with everybody.
Mike?
I was gonna say, the planning board, might touch on some of it, the planning board is working through some type of, some type of formula to be able to come up with, because as Mike said, you're commercial, you have required parking spaces, so I mean, they're at a disadvantage. But you're also, you're also looking at areas that are in our low density, that you still have subject systems, where you need the subject system, and you also need a secondary system, a thager system. So you can't very well take up all of that space also. And then in a third case, you also have areas where you have the canopy that's just so dense that all the underbrush can grow, and then you have a habitat issue underneath. So, I mean, the plan, there's a lot of moving parts that they're working with, and so far they've done a pretty good job addressing this.
You know, I see a lot of pine trees first. Hence, frankly speaking, they will need to be taken out. So you should, you need to take basically every other tree out to make it healthy for the other ones. And so what are we doing with these kinds of things? Yeah, you know, that's just my question. I'm not a bad actor, but I want to have two healthy trees instead of three almost dead trees, just because they were planted wrong. And there is a lot of wrong planting around here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, you know, it's funny you mention that, because that's one of the things, anytime, and I know Jim from the planning board mentions it a few times, when we get planting plans now from developers and other people, yeah, that's very much, no, you can't just go and plant a row of pine trees. You have to, you have to, well, yeah.
But they do that, Mike, you know that, right?
With new developers, though, yeah, they, it's easy for them to just say, sure, we're gonna go and put a row of pine trees in, and we don't let them do that. That doesn't address what's up.
But they're there.
Right, they're there now, yeah.
So you should basically actually clear them out, you know? So how are we going?
Just some.
Yeah, this law does not address how people should be clearing out or should not be clearing out. It really is only about when someone comes to us with a special permit, and it triggers how we review a planting plan.
Okay. And that reminds me, the other big topic was, is just a blanket, hey, anytime you need a special permit, this comes into play? Is that appropriate or not? For Northeast Peds, probably yes, that was appropriate. For the person who had a building there and they just want, you know, say somebody just wants to change, you know, a part of their house over to.
Change of use.
Like, change of use. You're not changing the footprint, you're changing nothing outside your house, you're just changing the use of it. You need a special permit for certain things. Should the tree law trigger that? Yes or no? All you do is want to have a home occupation there, not changing anything, or you have to have, you know, more trees now. So we're talking about that too, to see if, the way it's triggered is appropriate.
All right.
On the other hand, we also want to encourage people to have trees. I mean, you know, in addition to everything else, aesthetically and for the biodiversity and everything else. So, yeah.
One of the things that was recommended, so we reached out to the New York State DEC, because they actually have people on staff who are there specifically to advise municipalities on things like this. And so one of the, one of the questions was, do we want to develop a suggested tree list for the village that is appropriate and have some sort of guidance? So there are lots of precedents of things that we can use to build on, so that we can help people make better choices about.
That's fine, but that won't be part of the code. That'll just be like a handout, right?
It would be an appendix, probably, that can, right, it's not part of local law that has to change, because something next year could very well become an invasive species here, and you don't want to change local law every time, yeah, change that.
I think part of that is, you know, to help educate people, or putting what they're putting on their property, but also to educate us. You know, I come into the planning board with a huge amount of horticultural knowledge, which is great, right? But not everybody does, so if we had something that was a list that we could refer to, it would certainly make those conversations a little bit easier.
Agreed.
And this is the benefit of having these joint meetings. If you had ideas, please send them to me, please, and I'll get them right to the planning board. This is the beauty of it.
Yes. And a couple of comments. And a couple of comments related to what Wolf King said, if someone has no room for trees, well, that was accounted for with Tree Bank, where someone contributed money and they just couldn't get another tree on, it would not be good for the property or the buildings on the property, the Tree Bank comes into play. And the other comment is, what we're doing now is exactly what we wanted it to do, is to start and as we use it, adapt it to be better. But we had to start somewhere, so this is a perfect chance to refine it, make it a little better, and a year from now, two years after more experience, make it better then. That's the way a code should really be. It shouldn't be in stone, never changes, it's got to change. One thing to, the discussion made me think, I, there was, three or four years ago, I attended a seminar on climate change. One of the points the person made, which really surprised me was, if climate change continues and warm weather continues to move north, deciduous trees will die and evergreens will take their place. So we can't just say, kill all the evergreens and put it deciduous, in 30 years, we might need those evergreens. So we won't be here, hopefully, when that happens, but it's, it's a possibility, but-
I don't wanna be here.
Not, not right here. Not right here.
It's real. Anyway, so.
So anyway, but, good discussion. Anything else?
When do you think that will happen?
Oh, gosh.
Depends on how busy you get.
Well, I think that's the thing, right? It's hard to tell. Last meeting, there was almost nothing, so instead of canceling, that's really what we discussed, but, you know, I would, I would suspect in two to three more meetings, hopefully we have the time to carve out. I know that people, now people, you know, it's getting warm, people are starting to come back into the planning board for a-
Right.
Things that, yeah, they wanna do.
The, the more we can-
Right, we'll see you in two weeks, Mike.
Yeah, right.
Two or three meetings, yeah, no, no.
The closer we can get to having it ready for all of those people coming in, the better. But, but don't hurry, do it right.
No, we, and like I said, we got through a good chunk of it last time, and so hopefully at the next meeting, we can get through, if not all of it, another big chunk.
Great. So the next topic of discussion with the planning board is, discuss the proposed solar law. And wanted to make sure that we're looking, everyone's looking at the same, this version that I'm showing. There was a red line version going around that we, that the trustees had last seen. This is a version we had not seen where all of the red line is gone and all of the changes that the red line imposed are now comments in this column, so that's why this version exists. And so, whether, let's start with questions from the, the planning board as to suggested changes made by the trustees.
You know, all summers, I think the, the big ones really, the, you know, a lot of it's just formatting and, you know, cleaning stuff up, but I think there were some big, I know the big things about square footage, about conveyance of solar permits, about some examples, decommissioning, I think those were really the big, correct, the, the big things. I don't, I don't think anyone, you know, had questions about the capitalization of spring systems or, or not, but-
Of course I did, but I'm gonna let it go. I do have a couple of concerns about a couple of the definitions that could be, and I'm not sure, I, I know it was Carolyn, I think the, the note that I saw was you felt that some of these were just, everybody knew what they meant. I was, I was concerned specifically about whether it's all of the definition, but farm operation, I guess, I, I just want to be sure that we don't get into, we only have one, I think, situation where possibly be, come into play, but farm and operation, I think one of our thoughts on the farm, on farm solar energy system, and then we mentioned farm operation, nobody's gonna look up the articles. And so we sort of thought, let's just keep those definitions so that people don't have to, it's a matter of education. Blair, I'm only concerned if, if, I guess, there's not an issue with oil with most of these panels, I don't know. And I would keep nameplate capacity just because it's referred to, and I'm not sure everybody knows what that means. I did not.
I don't, I, I just don't think you have to define everything, I think it makes a lot easier to access. But, I mean, all of the suggested changes are just suggested changes, they're not changes. I just think that if we'd simpler and more accessible and more encouraging of commitment to solar, it's in the best interest of the village.
And so those ones that are left in there, I will share too, those came from the model solar law, so those, you know, there, there were a ton of other, well, I don't know about a ton, but there were definitely other ones in there that, as, as we went through it and tried to tailor it for the village, if it wasn't referenced anywhere at all, it got taken out because it just didn't make sense. But, so, right, some, some of these other ones, right, these aren't things we came up with, just if that helps the discussion at all.
It does help.
You know, most, most of that is from, from the state through the model solar law.
I think, well, we, part of that came out as, you know, we had our application that we worked through. So some of that, you know, by the time somebody goes through that, I assume that they will know what some of this stuff means, but I don't know, I just think it's always an opportunity to educate people. But I think nameplate capacity I would like to keep, if possible.
I would not.
Pardon me?
I would not.
You would not?
No.
It just because, you know, the reason I said that is it's the under optimal operating conditions. I just thought that might be important.
Well, Gang doesn't agree with your definitions there, so I thought it was simpler to take it out because he doesn't think that the science is accurate.
Okay. Well, that, that, that's one, Carolyn, but put that aside. Nameplate capacity, if you look at, for example, solar panels, it's DC nameplate capacity typically, because they provide DC. If you look at inverters, it's AC nameplate capacity, which is pretty hard to calculate if you don't know how to. So it's more confusing than if you take it out.
Okay.
And everybody, there is a nameplate on it and you see the nameplate capacity and it just doesn't matter, honestly. And who defines optimal, the, the optimal conditions? Optimal conditions are moving, it's a moving target.
Depends on the clouds, that's it.
No, 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 I, I, I deal with regulations since 35 years.
Okay.
Okay, emissions and these kind of things and electrically and whatever, that changes every, every second year.
Every year.
Yeah, it does. So why should you put something in, which first of all, not a lot of people understand, and second of all, it just confuses people. And the guy who installs it knows it.
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I, I guess, right, the application captures that, and the application generally is filled out by the solar installer, right? Because-
This, this guy should understand nameplate capacity, otherwise he's in the wrong, in the wrong business. So, you know what I mean? So, the, the same with Carolyn took out kilowatts and megawatts, for example. I totally agree with that, because if you define something, you should define watts. And everybody who attended school should know that kilo is times 1,000 and mega is times a million. So, honestly, so if you want to define something, you have to define watts, then it brings you back to, is it AC, is it DC, is it whatever, what the heck? So honestly, it's just confusing.
Well, and I wonder then, you know, taking all that into account and thinking that, you know, this is, right, this is the code, and as, as long as the things that are in here, you know, somebody can say, right, if we're talking about square footage, okay, we, we've got square footage, you know, do we need other calculations and figures and things in here if it's really up to, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the, you know, the person installing the stuff, but they're gonna work with, you know, a solar, you know, developer to do these things. Do we really need that stuff? Now, now hearing, you know, Wolf King come, do we really need that, that stuff in the code itself?
Probably not, but one of the things that's still, and what I would like to check or have Natalie check for us is the farm operation thing, because if we keep the on-farm solar energy, it refers to a quote farm operation, which has another reference yet again to some other law, which I did not-
But it's not anywhere else in the rest of this document.
I know, but I think, I just don't want, well, and I will, I will defer to Natalie and Peter perhaps, as to if we were talked to farm operation as defined by, maybe it's fine. I just want to be, you know, I just want to be sure as there's not somebody who's gonna slip through because we think we would do it this way.
So we did specifically, and we did specifically end with Natalie, talk about the farm operation piece, because that's the one, and went and looked at some of the agriculture and markets law, because that is the one thing that sort of is, is a little unique about, you know, not being able, there's certain things, like you, like even requiring special permits of a farm operation, there are certain times you just can't because it's burdensome. And so that's what that law refers back to.
Can I ask, is there, where in the village, what portion of the village is in an ag district?
I think there's a very small part there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the definition requires that it be in an ag district.
The, the kind of beige colored area up at the top there.
But it's defined right here. I mean, I just don't see anybody, I don't see a loophole.
Like I said.
I don't see a loophole.
Well, I don't know, I'm assuming that as defined by that article is not any different than the one that's referenced up here in the thing, I don't know, I haven't checked that. I, I don't personally know that it's the same. And I guess I would like that.
If it's not the same, then it has to be changed because it should be the same in both. It doesn't make any sense if it's not the same.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, it might, we might just be able to, if we need to keep something, just combine it anyway and not have two separate definitions, like, hey, farm thing, extra sentence.
I would be fine, but I want to be sure that they're the same, that's all.
That makes sense.
We can check that very easily.
I tried to, but I didn't have the time.
I think one, one of the things that was really the first big thing that was discussed too, other than, other than some of the definitions, was the square footage piece of it.
Yeah, it's a bigger thing.
And I think that, you know, Drew explained the way that he did it right, and not to put words in your mouth, Drew, but I'll, I'll paraphrase and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, as the, as the trustees reviewed it, and Drew specifically looked at that section, it was more along the lines of, hey, you know, how much energy does a house, you know, typically consume and what would that equate to solar panels to power it, versus we looked at it from more of a kind of like land use and how, you know, is, hey, here's an example, is that too big, is it-
Aesthetics.
Yes.
Drew, can you go for that again?
Not just aesthetics, so too protecting like neighbors and setbacks and things like that, and what would really be available on various parcels in the, in the village.
What would you need, what, what's your footnote here, because it's, it's cut off in the red line? Your whole, your whole explanation of what number you would like to see?
My whole, I would like to see it to be at least 1325 because, you know, as it is, as it's written right now, I just want to point out, I'm not sure everyone is aware, if, once you get to 501 square feet, as a resident, you cannot build 501 square feet ground level solar, it is, it doesn't go to tier three, it's just not allowed.
Yeah. Yeah. You didn't give a damn for it.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I think if they're getting a building permit, a special permit, you should kind of allow people to, to decarbonize their house. And, and it's often possible that having it on the ground is better, depending on the direction it's facing, if there's trees in the way or not, that roof, or how the roof's structured. And the way, right now, 500 square feet, if you have efficient, you might have less efficient, but if you have efficient solar panels, that would only give you enough to decarbonize a fully electrified house of maybe at best 1,500 square feet. And, you know, so I, I think that kind of limits, that limits, it kind of creates additional hurdles for people to decarbonize, and I don't know if, that's a very different level than what the New York Public Service Commission kind of caps it at, which is 25 kilowatt. So that's a lot lower. And, you know, I, I can speak from my own experience that when I have my house with the geothermal and everything electrified and an electric car and, it uses a lot of electricity is, is the tradeoff, it's more efficient, it loses less like energy collectively and it's cheaper in the long run, but it uses a lot of energy and to, to be decarbonized, I had to put additional solar panels on one side of my roof and it was a close call as far as the installer said, you know, really, and in my backyard is really, it wouldn't really have any neighbors, but they said you could put in your backyard, but if you, you know, those trees over there would be kind of in the way and it probably, but it'd still be maybe more efficient, it was kind of a close call. And it would be, it'd be difficult because I, I needed, I needed more than 23 solar panels to kind of get me to the point where I could be fully decarbonized and, and that would be, if I were in that situation, it would kind of be, going through all those hurdles would be kind of discouraging.
This is actually the very crux of the issue that we're, we're all grappling with right now, the protection of the other village zoning laws and the importance of them and the electrification and-
Encouraging.
So I don't know the answer here, but this is, this is exactly what we should figure out tonight, is what do we want to do with that?
And so, also from the, and I'll, and I'll preface it with this, I'm a proponent of solar, that's great. We didn't write this and amend this though to promote solar.
I know.
Because I don't think that's, but, but-
No, I'm, I'm the village aesthetics and zoning laws.
Right. So, in the way that I looked at it too, so is everyone familiar with the, the solar array on Vertik Hill, as you go down Vertik Hill, there's one on the right there, 10 panels, two rows, 20 panels, if you take kind of a large scale, and I didn't go up there with a, excuse me, tape measure and actually measure the panels, but if you take a look at that, that's probably roughly 400 square feet. If I look at that, I say, you know, hey, that, that's, I, I wouldn't look and say that's a small panel, I wouldn't say it's an array, I wouldn't say it's a massive thing either. But so, right, looking at, I think it fits well on that piece of property there, I mean, and I think they have space there too, but not everybody does, so right, what's that right number in concordance with all the other village and zoning laws that we have? And keeping in mind that there is, not that we always want somebody to go to the BZA, right, if we say, you know, no, 500 is the number and we don't want somebody to run to the BZA every time they want to, you know, build 501 square feet. So, right, what is?
That's, that's exactly the question. I mean, it's nice when it's in the hands of the planning board so they can also talk about all the other things that they're gonna talk about, placement on the property and buffering and, and everything else, but yeah, this is important decisions.
Well, I think one of the things that started this too is when you were on the planning board, as we know, we had the one situation, East Shore Druton, and I'm looking at Larry Vieri's, what, 21 panels?
Yep.
And, and the backside of his, he, he's facing south, the backside, he has tons of trees and he's actually buffered it, even though that's what he would be looking at. But that's what we're wanting to be sure. It's not just about aesthetics, it's really being sure that you're also protecting the properties who are gonna be next door to this stuff. That's the thing, because you don't want their houses to be devalued in some way. And so you have to be, I'm, I'm sure because of the setbacks, there's shade and all of that kind of stuff, I'm assuming will be taken into consideration. And it's understood that when you install these, you're gonna have to maybe cut down some trees to make it optimal, but there's a tradeoff, so, but I think our, our real goal was, that's what zoning really is, is to not just, if everybody just did what they wanted, you don't need zoning. But it's like, I'm saying, oh my God, you know, you, you've done this right, right next to me, I had a vegetable garden here and now I get no sun because you just put your solar panels here and it's shading that. So I think some of that was part of this, is, you know, thinking about protecting everyone, it's not just a person trying to install. But I mean, the ones that we've seen are pretty much 21, that's 21 panels that Larry has, and I think-
Yeah, that's seven rows of three, the one on Vertik is two rows of 10. And again, this is, you know, so-
And then there was the ground, we just felt, if it's on the roof, who cares? That's just a building permit, everybody's happy, that's lovely. The ground gets a little more complicated because of those other issues. And I don't know what the answer is either, exactly.
I have a thought. So my concern here is less about the number of square feet, as long as the setbacks and the buffering is done. If you do your setbacks and your buffering, have as many as you want.
Right.
Because then we're still doing that protection, so maybe the number is less relevant as[1778.33] So maybe the number is less relevant as long as we make sure that the language that calls for buffering and setbacks is appropriate.
Exactly.
But there still has to be some number.
But Lisa's saying there's the height. I mean, you can go up to 35 feet in the village. I mean, normally people don't elevate. Normally they angle, but I mean theoretically there could be something.
Yeah, but if you, if you take a look at the array in Forest Home where that's on a pretty tall pylon, both of them are, and that's, I mean, that's got some height to it. It's not 35 feet, but it's.
Yeah.
It's a billboard.
It is, yeah.
But again, if you had to, that's on 35 feet, you wouldn't be able to buffer it so we wouldn't allow it because it wouldn't meet the buffering needs.
How is the buffering defined?
Well, it's considered an accessory building, right?
400 feet or above 15 feet high.
What buffering is required or it doesn't say here?
It doesn't specifically say.
That's in the buffering part of code, not in the solar.
Once it becomes a principal building, your setbacks increase. So now you end up having it farther away from the.
We have to submit a screening and planning landscaping plan subject to planning board approval shows landscaping grading and other means of viewing them minimized from public roads adjacent properties specifying locations, elevations, height, plant species and materials. So actually there's a pretty robust buffering section right here.
Yeah, so Lisa, I guess what I'm asking is, so if you make this 1325, then they still have to get a building permit, a special permit. So that would allow a lot of stuff, but you still have some control over it? Or would, I guess your argument is make it 500, or your thought might be to have it at 500 and then if people want to do more, they have to go to the Board of Appeals to kind of go through that.
No, I don't, no, that's, I don't want that, right? I don't want, so I don't think, maybe 400 isn't the right number. Maybe it's something, but I think the other thing with the tiering structure in it too, if somebody goes and say, we say it's 2,000 or whatever the default was from the state and we, okay, well, we can have them come and they submit all these things. They, you know, give us a nice planting plan. That doesn't then trigger some of the protections that are in the other things. Because honestly, that would be pretty big. If we said it was 2,000 square feet, that would be a pretty big array. I imagine that we might want, and I know that this is the next topic, a decommissioning plan. There's all kinds of other things in there that come into play. So I think it's important to have some sort of figure here to help break them apart into different sections that especially help the planning board, you know, get through it. As, I don't want to keep saying developers because a lot of it's homeowners too, but as homeowners or property owners, is they come in and they start, you know, working with us on this. I think it's important to have something there.
So maybe the compromise is that we increase the size dramatically and replace the stuff I took out of the decommissioning plan.
And that's the thing, I'm not against, again, that was a number, we really based that off of let's, you know, what's currently here. We know technology.
I was there when we looked at that.
Yeah, so, I don't know, maybe, maybe we say.
I'm not qualified to say. No, I don't care as long as, I'm just concerned about protecting other people as well. That's my main.
Yeah, but if you read the, so when you read.
Yes, we do have it, but I'm just saying.
But that necessarily doesn't give.
But that's how we came to this.
That planting thing there and that screening thing, that's not a blanket approval for the planning board to just say.
That screening thing and a blanket thing I just read you is from tier three. So maybe we put that into tier two.
The other thing is though, to Ronnie's point too, is I suspect once this has actually been in effect, that will, there will be some things that, it's been triggered two times. Here's what we found from property owners that the planning board might want to make some recommendations that get changed in the long.
So how about this? How about for everything over 500? So this thing about screening and visibility is from tier three? How about everything over 500?
Tell us where, what page.
Section X.
What page?
Tier three.
What page, please?
Section X, page seven, screening and visibility. Maybe we copy and paste that to section two and say for everything over 500 and then it triggers all of that stuff. So you're still in tier two either way.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, yep, yeah.
But this way.
I would absolutely be fine with that because really if we're looking at making the screening piece more robust, then yeah, the number can be.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So I have a question, probably, this is for people who've done. One of the things we were talking about is like, okay, so it used to be a megabyte of memory would take up two refrigerators. Now it's become to like a little tiny something. Do you think, is this about capturing the light so it has to always stay the same size? Or do you think these panels are going to get littler and more efficient?
Definitely more efficient.
I think that they will get more efficient. I think that already got the space consumed before that. You can replace technology and get more power.
Well, that's, I think when we were talking about this, I said, I think this is going to be plenty because this stuff is just going to get littler and littler and littler. Pretty soon you'll be able to have a little factory in your backyard.
It's not.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
It's just physics and, you know, give you an example from my own life. I did 1984 at the University, a solar cell project. To find out the most efficient combination of silicon and hydrogen for the most efficient solar cell. It was 1984. I had an efficiency of about 23% conversion. Right now you're looking at 25, 26 probably.
That's all.
And then I got offered a job as a CEO of a solar panel company in California. And they tried to basically do like you do with a headlamp or a light reflector, but the other way around. So basically catch all the rays with the reflector and concentrate it on the solar cell. The efficiency was about 45%. The company is bankrupt right now or out of business because nobody was willing to pay the extra costs.
Well, and I think cost is important too, also let's remember.
So honestly speaking, I don't think that your solar panels are getting any smaller.
And you don't have profit.
What you have right now is a lot that's going on in terms of inverters. And inverters, there is a huge jump because everybody works right now on semiconductors, switching elements, different chemistry, different whatever. However, they are, gallium for example, is one being considered. Other ones, they are out about 10 years, 15 years, whatever. So first of all, you're dealing with cost. Second of all, you're dealing with physics.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it.
How big is a typical ground mounted panel?
Depends on what you, I made a comment, we discussed as the village trustees. You know, for me, the whole tier, whatever, I don't care, honestly. If I look at Europe and they have a long history of solar panels and I just read an article today about what they're doing over there. It's basically residential use. Can you get your house off the grid? The answer is no. That's not reliable. Do you have a, your personal consumption plus feedback into the grid? If you look at the New York State model law, they talk about 110%, which means for me, 110%, so most of the time, even not at 110%, you're probably on a good day at 80. So there is no feedback into the grid and the utility companies don't like that because it's a question of grid management and keeping the grid stable. Or are you running it for commercial purpose? And these would be the ones I would consider as categories. I've said that all along, didn't show up in the draft, it's fine. So that's it. If you want to have something, then I agree with Drew. If somebody tries to get off the grid, or let's say for the most part off the grid, it needs to be bigger than 500.
Okay.
Three times.
Depending on how your house is, you know, if you face, your roof is facing north, don't put a solar panel on it. Pretty obvious, right? So anyway, so I agree with Drew. If you want to make sure that somebody can get off the grid or decarbonize or electrify or whatever you want to call it, it needs to be bigger. Then Drew's calculation is probably a good guideline. If you say, we don't care, we only care about aesthetics, different ballgame. You know, you have to figure out what your primary goal is and then you arrange your secondary goal after that. But you can't say we are after aesthetics, we look at setbacks, we don't want to cut trees and we want to electrify every single house and we want to get every single house off the grid. That's just not feasible. It's just not practical. So you have to pick what's your primary driver and then arrange the rest. If you say aesthetics, then make it 250 square feet because then probably nobody cares about it. So you know what I mean?
Are you, is we, is us?
But I wouldn't say that, but you know.
Guys, just jump in when you get a chance.
I got the draft from the planning board, so, sorry for that.
But, well, the fact is, but we're charged with not looking at just what I want or what just you want, but what collectively someone might need. The fact of the matter is, we need a balance of some nature and not everybody can afford solar panels, let's face it.
Lisa, can I, oh, sorry. If you get a chance, I'd like to jump in real quick. When you get a chance.
Okay.
Go ahead, Drew.
Okay. Well, I think it's, even as far as aesthetics, I think Wolfgang's, obviously I agree with what he said on the statement he made, but I want to also just kind of add on to that in terms of aesthetics. You know, the power is going to come from somewhere. It's going to come from a pole or gas plant somewhere else and come in. Or if we're going to electrify things, it's going to come from a solar farm somewhere else or have trees cut down somewhere else. And so we could say we're not going to cut trees here, but it's going to happen. We're going to export the tree cutting somewhere else. We're going to have to have power lines coming in to bring it in, a lot more power lines. You know, I think having people generated at their own house is kind of a benefit to many people as well in the community. And I think that also helps aesthetics as opposed to building power lines and something down the road or just having it, you know, kind of all this tree cutting and solar farms occur somewhere else as well. Or they don't, they don't get off fossil fuels and we still haven't shipped in. I don't think those things will really, I mean, these things require some tradeoffs. If you really want to do something that's good for the planet, you kind of have to generate it on site because you don't have to ship it on the grid. It's kind of a big benefit, so.
I think we're all happy with the compromise that we came up with.
Yes, I think so.
So, I mean, at least enough people want to maybe pursue that direction.
Right.
Screening and visibility in tier two also. Could we just move that screening and visibility out and refer both tier two and tier three to that?
However we pass it, it's fine.
Well, first, once we decide the concept, we can make it work.
We're happy with the new concept. It's a compromise.
Over 500 square feet.
Yes.
So that there's something, that's the buffering. Something in tier two that accommodates larger than 500 square feet, yet still lets us address things like setbacks and buffering and so on.
And what about the decommissioning?
That's what I was about to say. Can we talk about, let's move on.
And before we move on to decommissioning, the other thing that the planning board should do though is go and refer to then the screening portions to make sure that no changes need to be made there. Because that's, a lot, a lot of that is made more for like when we talk about like, you know, oh, here's a cell tower and the fencing and security and screening and things like that. So let's make sure that it fits well with residential and solar and everything.
And if it's beneficial to have two versions, that's fine too. But if it's going to be pretty much the same.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully it's all the same, but we'll, we'll take a look at it and see.
Oh, the part of the thing, okay, sorry. Speaking about the trees and the buffering, there's a comment asking whether this should be exempt from minimum tree density requirements. One of the things that we're looking at in the tree ordinance is accommodating for that square footage. So theoretically, say you have 1,000 square feet of solar panels, then we would remove that 1,000 square feet from the calculation.
Work together.
That we're using to determine how many trees you need. So that rather than have a prescriptive number, that's a finite number, it's always going to be relative to the size of your built property, the size of your minimum parking requirements, the size of your solar.
Okay.
Right, so that one's up in the air still until we.
Yeah, that makes sense because the solar is beneficial as the trees would be.
Let's see if we can compromise on the decommissioning plan, which as Natalie put in the notes, I mean, my first thought was that if you're talking about just someone who wants to electrify their house, it did seem onerous, onerous and ominous. I mean, the language in here about, you know, bonds and then having to like file stuff with the county clerk. I'm like, for me to put a ton of powers on my house.
Which, which decommissioning plan section are you talking about?
Well, it was all the same at the beginning.
Yes.
So I'm talking about the whole, the whole, the concept as it came to us.
There's an appendix and a.
So helpful if you could refer specifically to like, for me, which page number or page, you know, F1 or whatever it is you're looking at.
Well, there was only one type originally, when you guys wrote it, you wrote one type of decommissioning plan.
And you deleted it.
What are you looking at? Are you looking at the one?
It's no longer here is the problem.
Yes, it is. It's right here.
Oh, there it is. It's in the notes. What page are you on, Carolyn?
Eight.
AJ.
AJ. That's the decommissioning plan as it applies for.
For tier three.
But it was for all three of them. I just took out one and two as a suggestion.
It was not always for all three tiers. Originally it was yes, three, yes, two. It was yes, three at the, at the recommendation, or not the recommendation, whatever. At the discretion of the planning board for two and at the discretion of the coding and zoning officer for one because we would never see the planning board, you know, tier one.
And I asked Mike that question. I said, is there ever going to be a case where you can think of a decommissioning plan being needed for one?
And you'd probably say no.
Absolutely yes. Absolutely yes. And I'll say why.
Mike said no.
I'll say why. Because if you're in an ag district, so that, the ag district that we pointed out before, you are allowed to have tier, it is farm, you are tier one.
Yes, tier one.
On-farm solar is actually the thing that needs a decommissioning plan almost as much as anything else because it can be much larger. And one of the issues with the on-farm solar specifically is that because the way that ground mounted solar is done on agricultural land, there's a very large concern that if you don't have a decommissioning plan, what you've done basically is you've ruined arable land. So I went to this with the town of Lansing, going through their solar permitting. And it actually became one of the largest sticking points because it was important to be able to restore arable land back to being arable after solar panels were removed.
So would those on-farm solar units be considered commercial?
No, they're on, they're tier one. They have definition.
Category because of the New York State ag market.
That's right. It's a New York State thing. The other thing is, is, you know, one of the things that you just can never, ever anticipate is we may not need to use it. I think it needs to be something, it could be waived. But you just want to be sure. It's insurance. You just, we cannot possibly see here.
They have to put a bond that is security.
Well, I don't know.
So maybe that's the part that's going to change. And I mentioned this when I came to the trustees though, is that there are a lot of things, since I've been a chair and even before that, when I was a board member and even before that hearing history, there's a lot of things that developers have taken advantage of the village of Lansing because there wasn't a protection in there. I would, I will flat out say, I would love for it to be available in all three tiers. And for whoever gets to make the call, whether it's, if it's tier three, sorry, you're out of luck. Tier two, it's us. Tier one, it's Mike. I would like to use that as little as possible. And maybe it's, and maybe more of the right approach is to carve something out actually in the decommissioning plan itself that, then for tier one, maybe it's a little bit different for the various tiers or something, that makes it not onerous for people. Because I agree with you that a bond can be onerous. If you're, if you're doing a tier three and you're putting up a solar farm, I'm sorry. Village needs some protections in that and it's going to be a bond.
Yeah.
For tier two, maybe we just want to know that you have a documented plan and there's a protection in there that we can say, execute the plan. No, we're not going to go, maybe same thing for one. No, we're not going to make you put a bond down because it's.
You won't be able to get one.
Well, right, there is that, right, yeah. But maybe that's a better approach to modify the plan itself.
So what is a name for it that's not decommissioning?
But this is the industry, Carolyn.
Plan of removal.
What do you want? Oh, I came up with something.
For tier one, tier two, like.
No, I came up with something for you.
We call it, that's not a decommissioning plan.
You can call this.
That's a bond and filed with, runs with the land.
The removal, the removal and restoration.
Yeah, a lot of places just refer to it as, you know, restoring it to, you know, the state it was in before you put solar, whether it was on a roof or on a, you know, on a rack.
I think because it's part of the industry, it's a part of the language of the industry that decommissioning is fine. But.
Yeah, that's also the language the state used. So that's where that came from. That wasn't, you know, an us thing.
I mean, it's part, you know, it's part of the telecommunications code.
But that's big business, telecommunications. I'm talking about like Joe homeowner.
Well, I think that pretty much, I think that a lot of people who would be having some of these situations probably fairly sophisticated and educated, not necessarily, but. I think they're going to understand decommissioning.
What? I'm just like, why are you making me file a bond so I can put solar panels? That's absurd. I put gas in my car, you don't care.
We're not, we're just saying perhaps that's inappropriate at those. But I still think you need to have something in the code that protects the village in God knows what situation that we can't even think of right now, but trust me, it will.
And that's been the issue before of, is it something that?
So instead of tier one, can we call it for on-farm?
Well, you'd want it for, absolutely for tier three and you'd want.
I know, I'm just talking about for tier, I'm just talking for tier one.
We could specify, we could specify any ground mounted that falls under tier one. Because honestly, that's where we're concerned. The concern is if you have a farm and you ground mounted solar, you need to be able to restore the arable land. to restore the arable land. If you have a farm and you roof-mounted solar, nobody's going to care.
Yeah, right.
It's really about the ground-mounted.
So you'd be happy with ground-mounted tier one?
I am definitely less concerned with a solar panel on a roof, but yes.
And not having a bond.
I'm actually zero concerned with solar on the roof, I'm really concerned about.
I don't, I don't know for an on, for, I don't know, we might though, I'm just thinking about, it's the same thing that Yamilah brought up, what if you go and do this, and now you, it's ground-mounted, and you leave it there and it's done, that land is no longer useful unless it's removed. I don't know.
No, but you already convinced me for that one, it's okay.
I thought you just said.
No, she's, and she's, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you said no.
Cut, cut.
No, just thinking about it.
No, I'm just joking. So that leaves tier two.
And then tier two, we're going to have homeowners in tier two.
Yep, and commercial potential.
So how can we distinguish between the two groups there, in terms of having to both?
You're worried about the bond?
I'm worried about the bond, and also Natalie really wanted them to file it with the county clerk.
Well, that's notice. That's notice. If it has to do with transfers.
Yeah.
You buy a house, it's got solar. You see it, but you don't know that it's subject to a decommissioning plan, or whatever you want to call it. And that's an additional burden you're taking on that you may or may not know about. You'll find out if, when they update your title, when you're, before you buy, it says, there's a little piece of paper in there, it says, this property is improved with a solar array approved by the village of Lansing, and it includes a plan for removal and remediation.
I just feel like then they have to, they have to hire attorneys.
Don't they already have to anyway?
They're passing their title, I mean.
Yeah.
When you put up stuff. What do you mean?
No, no, you don't. It just has to be noted in their deed or whatever, right?
Just noted in the county records, and you index it to their deed.
I mean, that's going to be like overwhelming to people?
No.
I'm thinking also of the number that.
Not to you, but yeah.
I'm just thinking about a number, I mean, I don't know.
Actually, Peter, can you please walk us through what would happen if a person puts solar, you know, ground-mounted solar on their home, say it's 600 square feet or whatever it is? What is the process of this recording, so that we can understand what, how?
As part of the permit, there's either a building permit or a special permit, you simply require that there be recorded, and it's $55, a statement that says this property has a solar improvement, and it's subject to the village of Lansing solar law, and pursuant to that, you can even say, it may require that there be restoration or removal and restoration when it's abandoned or otherwise past its useful life.
So either we have to provide that sample language for the people applying for building permits, or they'll feel like they need to have an attorney, special permit.
It's a condition, I mean, we make it a condition of the special permit, and they know that they have to go file with the county.
Well, if that's the case, would it be, would it be more comfortable if there's a form, that is a simple form that just gets, you know, attached, so that?
To the app.
I see what you're saying, what you're saying is, every single homeowner is not going to want to have to create this document from scratch, and they're going to want to have legal representation to do that. If we have a form that is like, you know, a recording form where, you know, a special permit gets recorded to the county, that eliminates the need for someone to pay for a lawyer to make that form, or make that letter.
It's really just a statement to give notice to a future lender or buyer.
I know that when we do a lot of the plans, like Brent will say, we want to, I want to note on the plan that, you know, there's this easement or something, because you don't want somebody to assume this property without being aware of some of these things. And people don't think, you know.
Responsible for. And this isn't too dissimilar, Mike, when I sign a plat for a, let's say it's subdivision, I sign a plat, I sign two copies?
You sign three.
Three copies, so they get one.
They get two.
Right, but, okay, so you keep one, they keep one, they have to take the other one to the county and file that.
So you actually take two.
And then acquire it to clerk.
Right.
And the assessment.
Yeah, so it's not that dissimilar of a.
Process.
Process, it would just, I agree, though, if.
The other, the other thought is, if there's no notice, and a lender may or may not know that there's solar there, they foreclose, they take title, they probably are not responsible for the restoration and removal. It's not a title issue. They got it free and clear. It's just a notice.
Is it the same process for a fuel tank, for example? Do you go through the same process? I just want to make sure I understand.
It is actually, it's buried one, I think.
If it's a buried tank, I think that.
No, if it's above ground, let's say.
Oh, like a propane, you mean? No, because they're rented usually.
Yeah, they're not usually owned.
Well, they are owned sometimes.
So, yeah, I guess if it's part of the package of the application, we're giving them the model solar, you know, our version of the model solar law, and then the final appendix could be, and then this needs to be filed with.
Or just have it be part of the special permit.
Yeah, and then it's just something that's.
But then provide.
Drafted for them.
Exactly, yeah, provide them with.
That's definitely less onerous.
The wording and instructions, what to do with it, what you got it.
Yeah, I think that's a.
I think that's fine, yeah. I would appreciate that as a.
Yeah, it's always nice to know.
Carolyn, thank you for bringing that up. It's easier.
Not my law, but that's my thinking on it, in terms of the benefit to it.
Any other big sticking points that we should talk about?
I think decommissioning is the major one, actually.
I'll just have a comment, and I had mentioned this when we talked about the tree law, I like the, and I don't know if it was just Drew or who, I'll put it in there, but, you know, as we talk about things being modified or waived, not that it's an exhaustive list, but some examples of things, or maybe it is an exhaustive list someday, but here are some things that, you know, you know, we'll take into consideration. So I think that's, that was good feedback on this, that I think we're already trying to incorporate into, you know, the tree laws as we think about making modifications to that. Because that, you know, for the people that actually are going to be able to read the code and figure it out, oh, yeah, as, again, as a, you know, whether I'm a developer or a homeowner looking to do something, it's nice to have some examples of, oh, well, yeah, I have that on my house. I would have never known that there were solar panels on the top of Northeast Pete's until they provide us the aerial view.
No, in fact, we didn't, and often I said it's.
That was another small, tiny change that we had talked about, which was not necessarily requiring the solar panels to be sloped in accordance with the roofs.
Yeah, you said that.
Yeah, and I.
No big deal, you guys don't care about that, that's too much.
I mean, Mike, is, is there any reason that you can think of why?
I tried to find that, I couldn't find any reason.
I had, I had found something in the fire code that somewhat discussed this, but like a lot of things in the code, it's very arguable. I don't know if I could enforce it.
Yeah. No, I'm not.
No big deal.
Again, if it makes it easier for a person to be able to, oh, well, yeah, I have to elevate it or twist it, I mean, right, you know, maybe the optimal angle, sorry, my roof is, you know, three degrees off, if I could just make it, you know, three degrees off parallel, okay, sure, yeah, I don't think anyone would even notice that it was maybe.
But I think we definitely need to make sure we have language for that, that we have that allowance.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the one thing was is eight inches or something, and as long as the eight-inch thing was.
Part of that.
I think then.
Yeah, that's, part of that is code, that's part of fire code.
But.
I mean, some of it is, and I don't know that much about solar panels, some of it's logical, if you've got a four-toal roof and you don't have the right pitch, then you're going to have to get it, you know more, most of you know more about solar panels than I do. You set them to the 12-toal pitch, you may have to tilt it back, it may not have, it may not be efficient being flush with it.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, good. That's our thinking as well.
Yeah.
In fact, I would quit, I almost thought, call Renova, or somebody and ask them what they think about this. Because, you know, maybe there is some, you know, I have a lot of questions about, so I even asked this at the thing, so you have to have, pretty much you want a new roof when you do this, so that it will go on. What happens if you need a new roof, they just take the structure off, piece by piece, give you a new roof and put it back on? Is that what happens?
I would imagine they take the mounts and everything right off.
Yeah, if you've got to replace the roof, that stuff has to come off.
A lot of this is about the engineering beforehand. And obviously, if you've got two layers on the roof, you're not going to put.
No, they're not going to. Well, I think that's one of the things on the application, is, you know, how many layers do you have? We discussed about that, probably a good installer's going to say that.
Yeah, they don't, they will not put it on two layers.
The structure's not, yeah. I wanted to mention too, you know, I think it came up when Wolfgang made a comment too, we were asking about, you know, as technology gets smaller and smaller, there was a, somebody made a comment at one of the planning board meetings about, oh, well, you know, sure, in maybe 10 years, it's a lot more efficient. If you go and put right, you know, if I install solar panels right now, it's expensive. In 10 years, I'm not going to say, ooh, the Wolfgang's point, congratulations, they're 2% more, I'm going to go and replace every one of my panels now. But no, you're not going to do that. Maybe, and sure, maybe it'll be smaller, right, but yeah, no, you're not going to.
Then you pay hazardous waste, so.
Right, yeah.
About three years into half a page of them.
Wow, yes.
I think Northeast, Northeast Pete said what they were just breaking even at seven years.
Yeah.
That they were just starting to recognize that.
Well.
That's what they were saying.
Look, look a little bit around internationally. I just saw something on LinkedIn today, where a guy complained that probably 25 years, if he lives that long, he sees the amortization, and, you know, dust, dirt, he can do what he wants, and things like that, you know? There is a lot more to just put solar on the, on the roof. There is a lot more in terms of what's the state law, what's the federal law, what can you do? You know, the guy wanted to, to put a charging station for an electric vehicle in front of his garage, actually, and his neighbors were invited to charge their cars there. Not possible, because there are some other laws and ordinances and whatever, you know? So there is a little bit more than just put solar panels on, on the roof, honestly. That's why I said, we need to pick basically our leading category, and then the rest falls into place, or not.
I did solar offsite about eight years ago, because my roof was just not big enough to make it worthwhile. And it's, I think it's 39 panels, and down in Chamon County, and it's net metered, and the, the two things that seem to be happening is time, you know, so you get a benefit over time, but rate, because of the way it works, every kilowatt I produce is worth more money. And so I'm getting it back much faster, actually, than I thought it's going to probably be about nine years, 10 years.
Yeah, something.
And they already, originally told me it would be 15, which I thought was a lie, but turns out it's going to be better than that.
Yeah, but, you know, the same goes if your rate goes down.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You have, you have exactly that.
It hasn't happened.
When are, when are the rates going to go down? I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, so Ronnie, do you want the planning board to make some suggestive changes? Do you all want to do that and pass something back around? What do you want to do?
I, I think at this point, I would like for you to make the changes, because you're the, you're the actual owner.
Okay.
And then I would keep Carolyn in the loop, and actually, keep us in the loop, and if, what you're, what you're going to do, and then we can provide feedback on, don't forget this and don't forget that.
Okay.
We've got a recording, and we can always go back and watch what was discussed, but I, I think you're, I think we've, we're all pretty much arrived at what needs to be done, but if you would do that and forward to this, and we'll change it all for you again, and we can do it again next year.
Okay, there you go.
I'm only kidding, the recording, I'm only kidding.
One and a half years after it's been in, then, uh, no.
Yeah, I think that would be the best way, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely, no, that's fine.
And if you can do that before the tree law or after the tree law.
Oh, we have to do it before.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, we'll do, we'll do it before, absolutely, yeah.
The tree law is going to take as long as.
It's going to take longer, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't take a meeting, it's just one.
Yeah, we can do this. I'll run some stuff past you, and if it looks good, yes, and I'll re-watch the recording. Oh, yeah, absolutely. This will take priority.
That sounds, that sounds great, I, thank you, Mike. Any, any other discussion on this topic before we move on? Okay, that's the primary topics for tonight. The next topic would be my comments.